One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, Councilor Gambino was got an announcement regarding our sister missing tomorrow night. Would you take that away, please?
Yeah, as well know, we're missing Katie Rowe, twenty-two-year-old female from a resident of this town. She's been missing since 2:00 AM Sunday morning. And I don't know what kind of information the sheriffs have gathered thus far. That's, of course, privileged information for the authorities. But I've been organizing a information gathering slash candlelight vigil. It'll happen here tomorrow night, excuse me, at 8:00 PM out in front of City Hall. And we hope to have the fire department, Josh Williams, chief, and possibly some of his crew, representative from the sheriff's office, and possibly the coast guard, probably NFK, and possibly someone representative from Safeway in Newport where Katie works. And then also minister to give us a location prayer. So everybody's encouraged to be here, 8:00 PM, about some candles. We have a tough week, we have a pretty good turnout. We have candles and stuff, torches.
And our representative from the police department is gonna give us the most way of something on what they...
I'm hoping she does, yeah. The person I talked to, Gail Dorsey. Dorsey, thank you. Yeah, she said that she hopes that somebody could be here to do that. I'm gonna call her and ask her if she remembers that.
Alright.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
I heard that News Harlem's gonna put a word in the paper to...
Yeah, and Coin, I think it's Coin Six and KTW are up here.
Yeah, who's looking at us? And it's gonna why you share on Facebook.
Oh, yeah.
And the fact that we're being recorded right now, too. So it'll hit the media through our recorded license. Okay, six minutes past the hour of seven. The April nineteenth meeting, city council, regular meeting. Is underway. Established formally.
Team?
Here.
Fisher Brown? There. Weisman?
Here.
Gambino?
Here.
Mathel?
Here.
Grant?
Here.
And we'd like to approve the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting in Deepo Bay of April 5th, 2016.
Okay.
Second?
May second, call please.
Team?
Yes.
Fisher Brown? Epstein? Weisman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Mathel?
No, I must abstain from that.
Grant?
Aye.
Want to do accounts payable?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we approve accounts payable with one correction or actually addition that didn't make the ledger. And that is Williams' tug-in tow, an amount of $3,148 for hauling of, was it gravel? Backfill gravel for point stream water and waste water treatment. Yeah. And that's the two to $3,148.
It's not on here?
No.
Okay. Just a sidebar, I get a quote from the local gravel haulers of D M actually is a hundred dollars a load less than the maximum price. So we get a very good deal with, it's a good true, he's got a big dump truck and works safely. So I've been sticking with him as a manager. But I do check quite frequently to make sure things are fair, pricing is fair. So I did take the lowest bid. Okay, just to say guys.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Maybe a second to call please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Weisman?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Mathel?
Yes.
Grant? Team?
Yes.
Okay. On special orders, item five. On the A item, water management and conservation plan for the city. Adam Sussman, GSI Water Solutions.
That's me, too, just in your pocket. Good evening, everybody. So I am Adam Sussman with GSI Water Solutions. And I hope to walk you through this pretty quickly because I know you've got other things to get to. You should also feel free to interrupt me at any time if I say something that you don't understand and want to be into a little bit deeper. I just, in introducing myself, my office is in Corvallis, so not too far away. And my background, that training for this, was that I worked at the Water Resources Department in Salem for about fifteen years. So that's where I got my training and this stuff. Worked all over the agency. The last six years, I worked in the director's office where I did a lot of statewide policymaking, working with the legislature, writing rules, and helping with administrative stuff involving staff. So that's my training and my background. And so I was happy to get involved in the city, had an opportunity to work with Brady, and it's been great. And I'll kinda explain what we did and why we did it, okay? Show you my eyes, do a gesture. Hopefully my battery won't run out, so I'll just keep going, okay? So typically when I do these, I wanna kind of at the outset, let you know what I'm gonna tell you. And so if you've never had a conversation about a water management conservation plan that's required by the state of Oregon, which is what yours looks like right here, I'll kind of explain what one of those are. I'll explain why you're doing one and spending time and money working on it. I'll give you some highlights of yours. There's a lot of information here, so I can't possibly give you all the glory details when you probably want them. It's important to know that this is important for two reasons. One is it will help you have a set of benchmarks for conservation, but it's also gonna help you get access to your water rights that you need for growth in the future. And then I'll explain where this whole thing is going, okay? Feeling good?
Yep.
Alright. So, um, these plans are required by OWBRD, which is Oregon Water Resource Department. And they do this, obviously, especially with public water suppliers because they wanna make sure that, you know, you have the right to use the public water. The state of Oregon, all the water flowing down the streams is actually owned by the public. And you get a right to use it through the state of Oregon. And so through their administering the public waters, that's kinda how it works. They have like a regulatory oversight and they wanna make sure that everybody that's using it is using it efficiently, okay? And so they wanna encourage you, of course, to implement various kinds of water conservation measures. And they also wanna make sure, not that you need a hook to do this, but communities need to be sure that they're planning for the future. What do my water rights look like? What does my supply look like? And am I thinking ahead twenty, fifty years from now about where I'm gonna need to be, okay? So those are sort of the high-level policy objectives of the state of Oregon, why they require these things. So, when do they require it, I guess? And really, they really started requiring these plans in the mid-eighties, I wanna say. But the Water Resource Department was having trouble figuring out how to get people to do them because originally it was just a good idea, okay? Hey, this is a good idea. You should go send your staff off on a mission and develop a water management plan because it's a good idea. And a lot of people took up the idea because it was a good idea. But the state wanted more than that. They wanted kind of a hook, if you will. So these are the hooks now, okay? So for instance, if you went to the Water Resource Department to get a brand-new water right on some stream, you would be required to develop and submit a water management plan. If you had an existing water right to use the public's water, like you do on, you know, say, South Deepo Bay Creek and Rocky Creek, and you need an extension of time. So an extension of time is something where you have to go to the state and say, hey, I got this permit to use Rocky Creek, and it's for a big chunk of water, but I've only used a little bit. And the timelines that were set out for me, I'm pushing up against those. So I'm asking you, the state of Oregon, to give me more time so I can keep developing my water right, which is very common to me to ask for more time, especially for a water utility, a municipal water provider, right? Because you're just developing your sources of water as you grow, okay? So if you darken the door of the agency, if you show up and say, hey, I need more time, guess what? That's another hook. That's where they say to you, here's your extension of time. But because you've got this extension of time, we're requiring you to develop a water management conservation plan. That is exactly what has happened to you. So I started working with Brady, oh, maybe a year or so ago. And one of the first assignments for us to help the city was we identified that both the Rocky Creek permit and the permit, one of your water rights on South Deepo Bay Creek, they needed an extension of time. They were past due and we needed to go through that process, which we did successfully. We got it extended out almost both of them to like twenty, fifty. So you've got a nice, long window of time to keep developing the water rights. But as a result of that request and that approval, you have to submit a water management plan. That's why we do this, okay? Sometimes you have a previous water management plan that's been approved, which you don't have. That could also trigger, okay? Any questions? It's a lot of stuff, I know. I guess the short story is, you asked for something, you've got it, and now they're requiring you to submit a plan, okay? These plans have these four elements in it. That's the way they're set up. The water supplier is who you are, how do you use water, a lot of information about that, which I'll show you in a minute. Second one is this water management and conservation measures. Everybody who submits one of these plans has to set out some benchmarks for themselves. Like, okay, over the next five years, I'm gonna do this thing that I'm not doing. Or I'm gonna continue to do this thing that I am doing. But you have to sort of, the idea is, everyone is supposed to sort of move forward in water management. So what Deepo Bay does, obviously, is not gonna be the same as Eugene, right? Because you're different communities, different issues, different resources. But the idea is everybody kind of moves forward with something, okay? And then you have a curtailment plan, which I'll talk about in a minute. And that's like, what do you do if somehow you have a really severe drought or when your water supply is not available? And then we do some water demand projections, okay? That's what makes up one of these plans. So just, these are just some highlights. This is the kind of stuff that we really drill into for you. And again, Brady has been fantastic, giving us all this information. We come up with questions like, why does this look like this? He explains it, and it's been a really great process. So this is just kind of showing you as an example, the kind of stuff in the water supplier where we're evaluating how you use water. It is kind of interesting. I mean, this is the total amount of water that you've used, put into your system between, you know, for ten years. And it's, you know, to me, when I look at that, it's kind of relatively flat, it kind of goes down, it goes down. We see that trend where things start dropping off after 2009. We're seeing that all over the state, right? Remember, the economy got really sour then. And, you know, it shows up everywhere. You kind of see this little declining trend and sort of coming back.
So, excuse me, so do people stop taking showers or what?
Uh, you know, construction stops, people, you might have less tourists coming, you know. You guys probably know better than me.
Efficient, uh, efficient dishwashers, efficient washing machines.
There you go, has things like that.
Sure.
People not wasting water.
Sure, but even, I'm saying, after 2009, we saw this trend all over the state of the demand decreasing because people were planning to do lawns and watering them or washing their crockery. There was a lot of reasons, like maybe not going out to dinner as much at restaurants, I don't know.
Is this a graph, does it go along the lines of a warmer summer or west rain summer? Do you think it's represented here?
It can. It's kind of harder to see in this graph because it's the whole year. So we have all kinds of graphs in here that show summer versus winter. And then you'll see like some summers are up and down. And it definitely, the short answer is, the trends that we see are definitely driven by a hot, dry summer versus a cool, wet summer. Absolutely. Harder to see in this graph, though, I would say.
So you'd have to have those side by side to actually know what was taking place.
And we do some of that in the plan where we really drill into it. I wanted to finish before my battery ran out, so I didn't. I didn't give you all the graphs. I could be over here for a couple hours if you wanted me to, which you probably don't. This, I think, is kind of interesting along the lines of what Brady was saying. I actually kind of find this interesting because what this is showing is the different customer categories that you sell water to, that you account for. So like the red, the single-family residential, that makes up about fifty percent of your water use. And then the commercial, which would be the time shares and condos, things like that. That makes up in the high forty percent, so I don't remember exactly the number. And then the rest are pretty small numbers. But what's interesting when you look at that is it's pretty flat, really. I mean, it bounces up and down a little bit. And I think that's exactly what Brady's saying is that over time, even though you may have had more single-family residential accounts added over time, you would think that those numbers would bump up. But I think at the same time you were getting more accounts, you were becoming more efficient. The fixtures were becoming more efficient. And so that's kind of an interesting story that for ten years you've added, I don't remember the number of accounts, but you've added a good number of accounts. And your water use over a year is fairly flat, so that's...
What's the blue representing, the small little blue?
Uh, you know, that's right, it's on the graph. It's, uh, Los, maybe? Is it Los?
Well, the only other...
No, I think it's public. I think it's public.
Public, that's the only other one.
Yeah, yeah. So I apologize, yeah, it looks like that somehow did make it on the graph here. So that's public, which are city-owned facilities.
Okay.
City Hall, wastewater plant, water plant, health stations.
Yeah.
Parks.
Yeah, so it's, but it's in a category called public, so I apologize. It didn't make it on that, on the legend, okay? So, so in part of the water supplier description, one thing that the state of Oregon is really interested in, I happened to work there when all these rules were written about how you do one of these plans, okay? And I know one of the things that they were really interested in is, as a responsible steward of the public water, are you accounting for, kind of as a basic function, are you accounting for the water that you have a right to? So in other words, you put a certain amount of water in your distribution system to send to your customers. So you know what that number is. And you know the amount of water that your customers are buying, right? Because they're paying bills for it. And then you compare those two, okay? And that's, the difference between those is unaccounted-for water. So in 2014, or 2004, and 2005, you had pretty high unaccounted-for water. So something was happening to the water within your system. Now, the state of Oregon, you know, they don't necessarily assume that that water's leaking on the ground somewhere. It could be. It could be that you have a leak in a pipe under the creek and you can't find it. So you're putting it into the system and that's adding up in your meter, but it's not showing up on the other end where your customers are paying for it. And that's important to you, right? Because that's revenue for you. Like water that you treat and put in the system, you wanna sell. You don't want it to go away. So having a good, low unaccounted-for water number is important. And your staff and the decisions that you've made over time have really focused on this issue by having a lot better automation of how much water, you know, are your reservoirs? How much water is going into your system? And understanding that, number one, kind of on the accounting side, on the management side, and then doing some replacement because you did have some leaking pipes. And I don't know, Brady, if you wanna comment on this, that by 2014, as you do the math, you're down eight point seven percent. And you get a gold star from Water Resources if you're below ten, so...
Well, that being said, that also decreases the revenue to the city because they're not selling as much product.
No, I think you're selling the same amount, it's just that you're producing less. You're actually becoming more efficient. You're saving money.
That's the loss that we're curating. So we're getting less loss of water, so it's not being leaked out into the ground.
Oh, I see, so these aren't all cases.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, at Geno Four, we were losing quite a bit of water. And we tightened up the system with more efficiency. And replacing water mazes is really the key.
Yeah, so this is, you know, I mean, as, like I say, I'm trying to give you some of the highlights here. This is a really nice highlight. And we talk about it a lot in the plan. We give a lot of kudos to the city for getting to this point, okay? Again, the plan in another section also requires that you have some benchmarks for doing things that make you more efficient with your management and the conservation of water. And we didn't like, we didn't make these things up. We're sort of suggesting these benchmarks within a framework that we have to work with. So, for example, it's not on here, but one of the required benchmarks is that everybody has to do an annual water haul. Like you were just looking at, you have to look at how much water you produce, how much water you sold, and what the difference is. So it's not here, but that's a requirement. So, one, so these are some of the highlights of things that the city has suggested they will do within the next five years. And my goal in working with folks like you and Brady is you don't wanna, you know, you don't wanna sort of suggest things that are sort of beyond your resources. You wanna suggest things that are important to you, that make sense, but that you can also deliver on, okay? You don't wanna over-proves and under-prove. You wanna try to match that better. So these are the kind of things we talked about. So like, one of the things we struggled with is that the way your water system was set up and managing and measuring, it was really hard to tell how much water was coming from Rocky Creek and how much was coming from South Deepo Bay Creek. So Brady, talk us through about what you want.
How we, yeah, we used totalizers and we're actually getting a new Rocky Creek meter so we can know exactly how many gallons we're taking out of Rocky Creek, which is really good. Because right now, we've got hours, you know, we turn the pump on and pump so many gallons per minute. That's kind of an old-school, Flintstone way of doing it. But I think with the state, we'll be able to keep track of the amount of all of the water we're using. And the low-flow shower heads, things like that, conserve water in the system is great. We've always had the toilet caps because toilets are main, our main loss of water is toilets not properly functioning. It uses a lot of use. And people are amazed how much water, they don't hear their toilets running because it's quiet. It's a silent water user. And some of them make noise, but some of them don't. And we did these tablets that folks who put in their toilet, it shows color in the tank that shows that you have a leak. So that, along with the shower head, aerators, yeah, all the little things add up.
And even adding water conservation information to your website, you don't have to go real big with that. You can have a little blur and then maybe some links to resources, like at the Water Resource Department or other places. But again, the state sort of expects that maybe you'll have customers that wanna get on your website in this day and age and read about how they can conserve water. So the important thing about these benchmarks that I want you to remember is that it's not that we're just saying that we're gonna do this, but in about five years, after this plan is approved, the state is gonna ask you to provide a little report on how you're doing. So it's gonna be important, Brady, for you and the staff to be remembering what you said you were gonna do and tracking it, okay? So I always tell people, make a list, stick it on your wall right above your desk, and remind yourself every day about what you promised you were gonna do. The other section, I didn't get into a lot of detail here. Remember, we talked about there's a curtailment plan, okay? So you guys in, I think it was ninety, maybe it was ninety-two, I can't remember exactly what year, you adopted ordinance one ninety-seven, I believe, which was a specific ordinance at, in a year when you were having a drought. And said, hey, we're adopting this ordinance and we want people to do the following things. But in that ordinance, one ninety-seven, you also said in the future, you may suggest certain curtailment activities through some sort of resolution by the council. So we've got this curtailment plan set up consistent with that, okay? So the stages are similar. So the idea behind a curtailment plan like this is that you have a pre-developed plan that has very objective triggers. So like Brady and folks that are way more familiar with your system than I am about how it works, say, okay, if my reservoirs, you know, are like only eighty percent full and I cannot keep them full, then I start getting worried. And so maybe that would be, I can't remember exactly, maybe that would be stage two, for example, where we'd say, whoa, my reservoir's only eighty percent full. I'm working as hard as I can to keep them full, but I've either got an equipment malfunction or I've got no water in the stream, or I've got, you know, debris in the stream, whatever the circumstance is. So Brady might come to you and say, hey, I'm at stage two. I need you to, by resolution, tell people to implement the stage two activities, which might, you know, there's a set of things that would be some mandatory, some voluntary. So this sets out those stages consistent with your ordinance. And then it would be up to you as a council, the way it's set up, to counsel evolution.
Yeah, to notify the public on what we decide we're gonna do.
Right. But the idea is you've kind of figured that out ahead of time, what the triggers are, what your actions are. You're not, like, if you wanna do something a little different, obviously you can. But it's a very good guidance. And this is something, I'll just leave it to you, we didn't talk about this, Brady, is that when this is approved, you might want your attorney at some point to look, you know, how does this ordinance, or this ordinance one ninety-seven, need to be modified to incorporate this? But that's kind of down the road, okay? But the idea is here, the state of Oregon, developing this plan, requires you to have a curtailment plan with stages and objective triggers and objective actions, or previous trigger actions.
Okay.
And we've done that. The last thing we do is then we start getting out our crystal ball and thinking about, you know, what is your demand for water now? What will it be in, you know, ten years? What will it be in twenty years? To make sure that we understand that you've got enough water, obviously, and more important, enough water rights. And we did not reinvent the wheel. You had a master plan from 2009 that did a lot of this work. So we relied on some of that work. And we made some projections. And those numbers are both in cubic feet per second, which is what water rights are, and then thinking about million gallons a day. So what that's saying is that we projected in 2035, you may need as much as 1.5 million gallons a day. Maybe that might just be for one day.
Right. Right.
Not every day. And, you know, we could be terribly wrong, or we could be right on the money. It's very hard to predict what's going to happen over the twenty. But we need to do that, and we've done it. And then, remember, early on I said you got an extension of time for your water right permit on South Depot Bay Creek and your water right permit on Rocky Creek. And to make a long story short, you have to use this plan in order to tell the state how much more water you need. So I'm going to just stand up and do some, I think I can do this math simply.
Sure.
Like, remember the previous slide said, we think you're going to need two point three two CFS in 2035, right? So what we did in this plan is for the South Depot Bay Creek, you already are free and clear to use, I'm just going to call it point five. And if you add that to the one point three two, I think that gets you, am I right? Maybe, no, that's not right. Oh, you have another water right on South Depot Bay Creek.
Yeah, we do.
So I'm going to use, maybe I'll use, I'm going to do some different math, sorry about that. Let's use Rocky Creek. The water right is for four CFS, okay? To date, you're able to show that you've used point nine seven, okay? So I'm hoping, Brady, that point nine seven plus one point three five is?
Four. Two point three.
Okay, close enough. I may add, there's probably some rambling going on here. So the idea is, when we set up this plan, we said, okay, your projected demand is two point three two in twenty years. We wanted to be sure that the city had flexibility. So, for example, in twenty years, you might have a peak day where you need two point three two CFS. And we don't know, but maybe, for whatever reason that we can't anticipate right now, all of that would need to come from the Rocky Creek source, okay? So we told the state, look, we need this much more water than one point three five under the Rocky Creek source to get us to the two point three two. Similarly, with South Depot Bay Creek, you already have half of CFS there. And if you take the rest of this plus the one point three two, you just have to trust me on this, it gets you to two point three two. So the idea is that you can use either source, in theory, to get to your maximum debt. And that's a big part of this plan. I mean, this plan is used by the state to help you get to this water. Because without this plan, you can't do it.
So are we at fifty percent of the Rocky Creek thing now?
No, you're about twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
So we got, so the permit covers another seventy-five percent of that.
Yeah.
Yes, we're going to, because of town growth and some more depending on South Creek and Rocky.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a little water to drink.
Yeah. And that's why when we were doing the extension work before all this, the extension out of Rocky Creek is, I think it's out in the 2050s. So you've really got yourself a long, you're in a really good situation. You've got a right to use the creek. You've got an extension of time for a really long time. With this approved, you're going to be able to take up to two point three two CFS from Rocky Creek. And so you sort of set yourself up with your staff and your decisions for a really secure future as long as nothing strange happens.
And the majority of the county would like to get rights on Rocky right now. Newport has way upper, upper Rocky Creek rights, but we're right there at the end. We're pretty lucky. It's a good source. There's no fish run on it and it relinquishes a lot of the problems that you would have in the state.
So that's why we really focused on getting you a long extension there and then making sure that you had access to use the water, okay? And so that's what this plan, this plan does lots of things, but probably the most important thing that it does for you from a water supply perspective is this. It allows you not only to have out in the 2050s, but allows you, the state can sort of give you their blessing that yes, please proceed on to develop that source. So I know that's a lot of information, if you, you know, feel free to put this by your bed if needed. It was a ton of stuff, and again, I can't thank Brady enough for all the help. So we are ready to submit this plan to the state of Oregon. We've already gone through a required, what they call a local government review, which was your own city planner, and he thought it was great.
Yeah.
And then we sent it to the county, and we typically don't hear back, which we did not. So that process has passed. So we are ready to submit it to Water Resources. And you'll notice on here it says final draft, because we're going to submit to Water Resources and they're going to review it. And we've never got an A plus. There's always some level of comments that they have. So they're going to have some comments and we'll have to fix it up a little bit. And then they will approve it. And that's, you know, I was talking about, well, we want access to this water in this little world that we were going to call that, giving a green light to some more water. So we call it green light water. So it improves the water management conservation plan and will give you the green light to continue your development to the extent that we need it on South Depot Bay Creek and Rocky Creek. So this, this whole review thing, it takes a while, we'll submit it, there's public notice. You know, it's a good three to four month process. And depending on what your pleasure is, you know, like, for example, if you were to adopt this or approve this or whatever, if you did it tonight, as an example, it could change a little bit, Brady, because of the comments we get. So you may, you know, kind of your pleasure, I've had other councils saying, well, we concur, submit it, and then when it's all final, final, Brady brings it to you and you approve it, or however you want to do that. I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear that it probably will change a little bit. Not substantively, I don't believe, but it could change a little bit between submitting it and getting to the app.
I want your tweets.
Yeah. So. So do you guys want to?
Do we need a motion?
Need a motion to approve?
I want a motion to approve the City Depot Bay Water Management Conservation Plan, as presented by Adam.
One second.
Did you realize it? Uh, I'm sorry, that's right. Realizing that you said there may be changes, mark changes, mark changes.
Call.
Wyeth?
Yes.
Cambino?
Yes.
Mattle?
Yes.
Grant?
Hi.
Teague?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
I don't think you want to.
You're welcome, yeah, you're welcome. Just decided you're waiting here. So, yeah, we'll get it submitted and we will keep you posted.
I guess I do have one other question in retrospect. Brady was saying Newport has the upper end of Rocky Creek Basin? So is that going to require building a dam before they can tap into that?
Well, right now what Newport has is an application to build a reservoir up there. Now, they, obviously, they can't take so much water that you wouldn't get the right that you're entitled to. Because you were there first, that's one of the basic tenets of Oregon water law. But I've told Brady before, if that application goes forward, if I were in your shoes, I'd be having a lot of conversations with them about how that's going to work.
Right, and that reservoir, if it does come to pass, is going to be sitting on a whole lot of private land.
Right. Yeah, they'd have to acquire, you know, the state of Oregon.
Something that's going to happen anytime soon.
It would, it's a long-term project.
They put it to on the back burner.
But under, under Oregon's law, like, if you're a public entity, like a corporation, like a city, you can make an application and maybe even get a permit on private land like that. But you can't build anything, you can't build anything until you can demonstrate that you have the authority, right, going to be through condemnation or agreement or what have you. So, yeah, it's, it's not going to be so.
I understand, yeah.
Good question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On to item D, Lincoln County Solar Campaign Request for Support from Bobby Wilson, Environment Oregon. She isn't here, but we requested to make a support motion, or is that what it is?
That is what Bobby is hoping that the council will consider this evening. You all got a copy of her email from March seventeenth? And she had, well, I copied it back to back. So the backside of the email is the resolution that she is hoping that the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners will adopt. And then the next page is a letter that she hopes all the mayors of all the cities of Lincoln County will sign and send to the Board of Commissioners in support of the solar energy campaign in Lincoln County.
Somebody might entertain a motion for a.
Actually, I was going to start with a question.
Oh, yeah.
It seems to me I remembered our Lincoln County Commissioners' joint meeting with Depot Bay City Council. I believe it was Bill Hall that mentioned something about this, on solar energy. I recall whether it was positive or negative. I want to see it. I mean, I think.
Yeah, the people want to briefly discuss what that's saying.
Yeah, they were talking about, I've been to her seminar and she's trying to get the states throughout Lincoln County to all, or just on board with future solar. Yeah.
Well, this is part of the funny thing as far as heritage concerns and heritage goals. I will put a support, so we don't make a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that we, we sign the letter to the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners for Environment Oregon, supporting solar energy goals for the county.
Okay.
Come on.
Could you read the motion back?
I move to sign the letter to the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners supporting solar energy in Lincoln County.
Well, I read this over earlier and, and I'm seeing this as a goal, not wanting to the future, not, oh, sorry, is that, is that right? A goal for Lincoln County. It's not going to force people to do better than, or anything like that, to use solar now. And the, the amount, but it's not going to make it compulsory for the cities or governments to use solar power on any of their units.
Now, it benefits, it would help, I think, benefit, like, if you want homeowner businesses, you get, you get federal discounts, you don't get for tax purposes, you think the same. So there's some benefits of all the, the, I don't know, efficiency type stuff that the state's involved in. I think they want it counted because of probably state money and county taxes too.
I think it's a benefit. There's, there's an alphabet soup of environmental organizations, actually, is environmental organ. Does anybody know? Does anybody know who environmental organ is? Besides the ones that I brought to the line?
It's a phrase, Bobby Wilson. It's a phrase that runs, essentially. And that was one of the questions.
It's not our problem that that was at Depot Bay, that was on the.
No.
Yeah, so I don't know where, how, Environment Oregon, I'm just trying to get at what they're, what they stand to gain.
That's what I was hoping. What is it for them?
I mean, Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at the numbers here. If they're accurate, I don't, I'm so suspicious, I don't trust anybody's numbers. And five hundred, the current number of installed, the solar capacity in the county is five hundred and seventy-five kilowatts, which is not, you know, it's not that much. And the, and the, and the goal of reaching the one point five megawatts, how many times is that triple that capacity? Am I reading that wrong, or is it more than that? I'm not sure. Megawatt is one thousand kilowatts?
Million. Million. Mega, million.
Right, so a kilowatt is a thousand, so. So if we're, so five hundred and seventy-five, so it's a, the, the goal would be to reach triple our current use by the end of two thousand twenty-two, which, just my opinion, probably will be achieved without any resolution, just on, in current, yeah.
Counselor, the projections that were, that you're looking at and that we're talking about are, hopefully, with the increase of the productivity of the new solar panels that are in line, solar collection, if they can reach these goals.
So Mayor, do you feel positive about going ahead with this?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
Anything, anything with solar, anything, yes.
I just wanted to say, I've got, I've got a smartphone and I have Environment Oregon website that I just called up on Google. So this is their homepage, who are we, what we do. Talks about some of their results and there's links to, you know, find out more about issues, news, research. So essentially what they're saying is that they are a, let's see. Environment Oregon is a statewide citizen-based environmental advocacy organization. Our professional staff combines, and I'm reading up this off the website, obviously. Independent research, practical, something, tough minded advocacy. Let's see, these, these are, essentially, they are environmental lobbyists. So that's what they do. They, these are people who speak up for environmental concerns, talking to lawmakers and, you know, our senators and representatives. And that's, that's all on the website, so I'm just saying, this is accessible.
I got to assume, I think everybody would, that this is a not-for-profit organization.
Correct. I guess you would have to find out, looking at their annual report, looking it out. I don't know, it doesn't state what their classification is as far as a five oh one or whatever letter or anything like that, so I think. So, I think, you know, that would, if you wanted to know, whether they're.
I'd say it would soon, but of course.
Then, uh, the thought comes to me that, uh, if the, the county commissioners are involved in this, and they're enthused about it, and why we shouldn't we follow suit with, uh, what the county commissioners are, are, uh, thinking about.
Well, I have to agree with you, just thinking personally, without raising my hand, um, but, um, I know at least one person, you know, one, one person, uh, who is in Lincoln City who has, uh, solar, and is completely off the grid as far as being dependent on purchasing their, their, uh, electricity from, you know, from any entity, and, in fact, I, I, my understanding is that, um, they actually produce electricity that they can sell back to.
Have their own oil.
Exactly. So.
There, again, I'm faced with a, another win-win situation as far as, uh, conserving energy is concerned. And, uh, solar, even though we have a lot of, uh, overcast days, look at the last few days we've had. That is a lot of kilowatts, if you've got the collectors in place to, to, uh, deal.
Charge your batteries, yeah. It's a problem with solar is, you know, the twelve-hour sunlight, lights go on.
Some of us don't even get that.
So, then, maybe, um, to make this equitable for everybody's mind, maybe we could, uh, make that motion to include the decision of the, of the, uh, the county commissioners.
Well, it actually would be, it's simply suggesting, I think, simply suggesting to the county that they go forward with it.
Okay.
With the idea of a goal.
As a goal, as a benign goal, I, I can support this, um, although I find it a little bit, I guess, uh, just my mind's suspicious that, um, for real, um, we're going to achieve that goal anyway, in, in, uh, in six years.
Yeah.
Yeah, no matter what, I just, uh, I, are they gonna, you know, my, I, I, are, are they gonna use our support and the city's, uh, support in Lincoln County to make a case what the county commissioners, look at all the cities did it? This, uh, maybe you should, as a county, take it the next step further, and, and any new buildings that you build have to, and there's, there's requirements anyway, but requires certain installations and yada, yada, yada. I don't, I don't, I just don't know where this is going. But, you have it all.
Well, that would require new laws and new regulations.
Right, yeah.
You could go over those at the time they come up. Cause I agree, you always have to be worried about something like that. I don't know how soon, but, but I went to her seminar, it was through Slack, and she said she was willing to talk to small, uh, cities and communities, but I don't know how soon this, that was, like, last month, so I don't know if she may, until a certain point, I don't know when this has to be, okay. She's willing to, uh, somebody in our audience had asked if they would go to, if she would go to Yohots and just go into their council. But, I don't know, cause there was a lot of questions, and Yoh- Yohots is.
Well, any commercial endeavor, uh, but it's either a win or a, or a no. But like, if you're in a business selling hamburgers, and, uh, you've got a cost projection that you're gonna make money, and you get in that business and you start selling those hamburgers, and suddenly you find out that, yes, you are, it was, uh, it was a good investment. And, uh, the, uh, energy that we will be, uh, producing and saving other, uh, energy sources is, uh, it's a lot of free hamburgers. That's the best analogy that I can give on that subject.
Uh, yeah, I guess, uh, I, one of my suspicions is, is like, if I'm a, uh, manufacturer of, uh, of solar panels, that, um, I would support such a group monetarily through contributions. That's why I'm really almost a hundred percent sure it's organized, it's a five oh one three C, so contributions can be deducted. That being said, uh, that, in, in the, and, so, so that, I, I'm building a, building a case, I, I, I see this building a case to force governments to use more solar, in the end, more, more solar, um, and, and make those, those very regulations, and, and use these nods, these supports from communities, being able to hold these up as, as reasons why they should do it. Look at all these city councils, you know, in, in Lincoln County. That, that's where I see it going, because I've never heard of Environment Oregon, and I'm sure they are, you know, what do they say they are, they're a group of consultant, I mean, of concerned citizens who pay for their salaries, so.
Well, there's no more discussion on it, no matter, let's call the question.
Cambino?
Yes.
Matt Hall?
Yes.
Grant?
Hi.
Pete?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Weisman?
Yes.
Do I get it right now? I did it for you, Mayor.
You don't have to take your hat off. I really feel, uh, I'm thrilled about, uh, the solar energy, that's the only free bar we have.
Yeah. And we have to do the tax side of it, so we should try it, right?
Oh, yeah, that, that as well, yeah, but, uh, there are all the benefits that we get, just we're, we're dissipating.
About the missing girl? I heard there was a meeting tonight at eight.
No, it's tomorrow night.
Oh, tomorrow?
It'll be outside right here.
Oh, okay, thank you, sorry, guys.
No problem, thank you.
All right, on to item six, the force of office boards or standing committees, I guess we have them. Public comments.
Fifty debate about the, the solar, I'm, I'm tending to the Senate vote, bro, still, but, you know, but, I don't know how big an hammer it could be, but, you know, I, I kinda suspect their motives. There could be, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
What do we have for unfinished business?
Send in.
Oh, we have the councillor's assignment. Wait, were you finished, I'm sorry?
Yes, I was.
And, uh, since we're losing one of our representatives this evening, that's gonna narrow that fanfare down. So, who are we gonna pick on here? For the, uh.
Oh, for the, um, for the assignment? Um, you all, I didn't, I, I think I re-copied just the list, um, in the past.
I have one here somewhere.
Where you review of the vacancies, um, which, you know, we better have another one. So, I don't know, we need an alternate representative for the coun- council of governments. Right now, Mayor Matt Hall is our primary representative. We need an alternate representative for the Cascades West Area Commission on Transportation. Councillor Cambino is our primary. Councillor Sparks.
I think it's right outside.
What?
Somebody yelling.
Won't hear it. Could you tell everybody?
Didn't sound very happy, or anything.
Lock the door.
We can't put the public meeting.
Yeah, I think it was out of the hallway.
Did you guys hear that?
Somebody yelling, I saw it. In the distance.
So, there are, there are vacancies.
Right, Cascades West would be a great one for one of the council people. I make most of those, but, uh, as witness played last week for the last meeting, but sometimes I just can't do it. It's really a, a great deal that Cascades West, uh, council of governments, um, it's one of our best, our better, uh, involvements. So, if somebody'd like to jump into that vacant spot, or would like to pay, Mr. Olson up on top.
What things do these, uh, organizations need, that's, you know, that's major?
Well, you can either go to Alden, which is what I'd like to do, because there's so many interesting people, but, or you can go to the, uh, the, uh.
Toledo.
Toledo, I stay in, in, uh, Toledo, and, uh, there's generally a couple of people from this area that make it to that. But, uh, it's, it's really a great organization.
They, they meet on the third, Thursday afternoon, typically, the meetings start at three, yeah, I believe.
Yeah, it's three, it'll fly, and I'm generally back here about quarter to seven, so.
Unfortunately, that doesn't work with my, my work schedule. Otherwise, I would volunteer for it, but unfortunately, Michael and Mary would kill me. I would be literally assassinated. So, but I would like to, uh, volunteer to take over from, uh, the vacant, uh, seat, that was up by Steve Sparks on the Mental Health Advisory Committee.
Public safety?
Uh, no, the Mental Health Advisory Committee. I volunteered as the alternative res- representative, and, and that's, you know.
Oh, I see.
So, you become.
You just scoot into the, the.
The primary.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to be that.
Which one is that?
The Mental Health Advisory Committee.
There, oh. Go from, from alternate to.
Oh, I see, okay. Great. And then, uh.
And I'm already on the solid waste consortium, so that's probably about as much contribution as I can get away with.
I would consider, uh, Cascades West Council.
Yeah. The Cascades West, the first one?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, you'd really enjoy that, uh, that meeting. And, uh, as a matter of fact, the, the next one that comes up, if you'd like to write over there with me. You'd really see what it's all about. It's really a great organization. They have, uh, we're even stoked by them here, they have Mules on Wheels, that comes out of that organization, that's right here in town.
It's a great organization. It's a great organization.
Yeah, people don't know about it because it's, uh, you're not supposed to advertise, you know, that. You never let the right hand know what the left hand's doing, but you're doing good, none the same. Oh, great, Jeff, thank you. And the second one would be Cascades West Commission on Transportation. Robert, you're the. Is there anybody that would like to, uh, be the representative alternate on that one?
And that's also, uh, silent cap. It's not silent cap, video conference, uh, from Toledo. Toledo has a council of the government's office, that's why. I'm trying to straighten up, there's some, I see the card.
Okay, I guess we'll leave that one for later.
When does the Safety Committee meet?
Once a month.
At any particular day?
Not really, we just kinda pick what schedule works and a timeframe with, uh, like, during the day. So, the employees will be here, so it's kinda makes the employees or, or, cause, uh, one from the staff, one from the field crew, and all usually attend, and then we work with, uh, like, Colin was the previous one, we worked for his schedule, and we picked a certain day out of the month, try to stay on the same timeframe.
Yeah.
But if it's a week or so, and then, uh, he'll say, yeah, I'm available this time on this day, isn't that how we get?
I just went to one, I never got any of the.
Weren't you, uh, on it? Yeah, but you, you attended one, right?
I never got any of those.
So, we're two, two, have one, I think we may have had one, um, without a, without, you weren't available or something, I can't remember. But, uh, the last one we had with the councillor was with, uh, Ca- Kathy Wyatt, I guess. She was the previous, yeah. So, yeah, a few more, that's kinda how we, we were working, we haven't had a, a, like, a representative from the council, so. I was thinking we had a meeting, I guess not, we may have talked about stuff, but, you know.
I would be, uh, unless the, the general councillor wanted that safety position, I'd be willing to.
I'd like to do it, yeah, because I was, uh, president of the Safety Committee at, uh, previous employer, when I was in Salem, and I've got experience with it.
Okay.
The only contingency I would have to say is that, uh, we, the meetings would have to be on Monday or Tuesday, because those are my days off.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it would have to be, you know, it, it wouldn't be possible, just because it would have to be, like, in the, in the evening or something like that, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that, and I don't wanna make anybody else do that, so.
We would have a timeframe and then just, just nothing, no certain days, so, yeah, absolutely. We, we, every, so, the, the crew, every year, the staff, we watch safety films, we have, like, Taylor Day Safety meetings, that were, so, and then we do quarterly, uh, building inspections, and just getting updated and, uh, you know, we, if you can't make it, we set a date, you can't make it, we still can have it and document that the, the staff have met, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I think, what we've been doing in the last few months.
Okay. Well, uh, yeah, I, um, although I do appreciate your, your willingness to, I, I think I'd like to go ahead and do that just simply because of my past experience and circumstances are kinda lining up, where I think that's gonna be okay, not gonna take anything away from anybody else.
Okay, great. The wastewater advisory committee is really, we, we really need to fill those other two.
We need to, yeah.
Olson and Sparks.
That's pretty, yeah.
And we, we're coming up with that, uh, Gleneadon, uh, meeting, uh, and we're, as, as you neither know or don't know, that all of the sewage from Gleneadon comes here to people day, and so it's, we, we really need to be well represented, even though we have three people, uh, two others and myself included, uh, but, it's really, uh.
This is more, there's some big, you know, there's some, uh, changes that Gleneadon would like to see, and we need to have our council on board with, so, unfortunately, Zeke and, uh, Mr. Sparks that were, uh, involved with AJ, along with myself and wastewater plant operators, um, they had, um, had a list of, of changes that they would like to see, well, since then, we had, uh, lost our attorney, he wasn't heavily involved in it.
Right.
And then, then we had, uh, got our new attorney on board, and then we were ready to have the state meeting, and then Zeke resigned, and then, yeah, Mr. Sparks resigned, so we're kinda at a, a point where, if we could get a couple more council on board, we could have an in-house meeting again, and then meet with our attorney one more time, so it's, it's a pretty important issue, it really.
Yeah, it's time well spent.
We would, uh, get people on board, cause it's, it's, it's a big concern for, uh, businesses. We would, we'd need them onboard because it's, it's, it's a big concern for businesses and homeowners in Deepwater Bay.
Right.
Because of how much impact that their, their system puts on Deepwater Bay and us treating the sewer. Sixty forty, they, they provide sixty percent of the sewer that enters Deepwater Bay and we're treating, so it's, it's a big one.
Jeff, okay, forget that, Phil, great.
Thank you, guys.
And we'll, we'll make a note to keep you guys updated.
Well, send me the email. Be great to know. I don't want anybody else.
The accounts, the accounts table, I'll, I'll do the, the, hold it with Robert. So that leaves us with.
I'll be, I'll, I'll do, I'll be alternate to Robert if he, he's out for the accounts table.
On the Cascades West?
No, on the accounts table.
Bottom. Oh, like, communications?
No, right here, Mr. Mayor.
Bottom. Oh, oh, I already.
Oh, you got that already?
Yeah, I already took that one. How about the Lincoln County Communications Intergovernmental, Governmental Council? Which, by the way, since I've been primary, has not met once.
That organization is, you may never have a meeting.
Yeah.
I think there was one meeting about two years ago. Maybe three, well, maybe, anyway, yeah, they don't, there's no regular schedule, they meet as needed. And they would meet when there was going to be some kind of revision. This is, this relates to emergency communications, nine one one. So you may remember, how many years ago was it that it changed to the work as well?
All right.
And there was some meetings at that point in time and nothing has happened, so.
All right, you can fill me in on that too.
Okay. And we do need, let's see, so there's still the alternate for the Cascades West Area Commission on Transportation.
Right.
And then the Lincoln County Public Safety Coordinating Council. And then we, we shouldn't have one more counselor on the audit review committee. Currently, Councilor Grant is serving on that.
Thank you, we're done on, done on it already. So I'm, I'm, I'm volunteer again.
Audit, that audit committee, would you be interested in that as well, Jeff?
Sure.
Great.
And again, that committee, there's no set meetings. The purpose for that committee is, at such a time, our annual audit. If the auditor wishes to speak to representatives of management, the city council, they, the auditor would meet with this committee rather than full council. And then the committee can bring items to the council, so again, no set meetings scheduled.
So, okay, the Safety Committee and Colin was on that, so I need to replace him.
Joe.
Oh, you got that already? Okay, great. Yes, sir.
Perry, could you tell us about the Lincoln County Public Safety Coordinating Council, and does it meet?
Typically, here's my notes. That group typically meets quarterly in Newport. They discuss local criminal and juvenile justice policies and intervention strategies. That's a very brief summary of what that group does. If you may, you may recall that former Councilor Sparks brought this to the city. He, he wanted to become involved, and the city said, yes, we should have a member. And so he did serve as a member on that.
And when, they meet, once a month?
Quarterly, quarterly, yeah.
Which one is that?
Does it say, Lincoln County Public Safety Coordinating Council? Does it say what time or days?
You know, I, I don't have a note on that, and I don't, we call, it seemed like they were daytime meetings, not evenings. I remember there's a large number of people on this, it's, it's like a group for sort of interesting. It, it's a Lincoln County group.
Yeah, well, you know, I, if it's quarterly, I could, how long are their meetings due? I have two hours. As long as it's not on a Friday or a Monday, I could do it. Or in the evening, as long as they're moving.
So put you down with it.
Put down as a.
With a question mark, hold it to the time frame?
Yeah.
I'm running out of ink here.
Are you?
Okay. I only see one vacancy remaining, and that's the CWA, Cascades West Area Commission on Transportation. And that's the alternate.
Well, why don't we leave that one for later and we'll pick on one of our new council people?
Yeah. Yeah.
Kind of leave something for somebody else.
I mean, I, we've already, between the four, five minutes here, we've already covered a whole day, so.
Yeah.
I'm getting, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm getting a, oh, no, actually, I'm not going to be commenting. I'm getting a little worried that, even though I am associated with other councils, my shot at meeting, it reduces, the, the, the smaller and smaller core of this is going to get to the point where I can't hardly meet with one other council.
Okay, we'll work it out.
I can see the current problem, you walk in, I gotta get out.
Don't think it has a cross time on your, your timer too as well. How many can we have and it's still okay?
Oh, Lord. Okay, we're over here. Is that enough, we're only now fresh? Okay.
Thank you.
That's on today's business, Councilor's plan went through. New business. I am a draft harbor master plan and public outreach process.
Mayor, we're, we're, we staff, we're hoping that tonight, or at least the council would discuss, if not determine, how does the council want to proceed with getting public comment on this draft master plan for harbor?
Oh.
Do you want to hold open houses? And invite people to come and review the plan and provide comments? Do you want to form a stakeholders group, identify people? I, I don't know. So, so really what we're looking for is the council's direction on how you want to reach out to the public of Deepwater Bay and get their comments on this draft master plan for harbor.
Well, as soon as we get that draft, then we can advertise, can't we?
Yes, and you have, you should have a copy of the draft.
Uh, that's right, I, I have it right here, yeah.
So we do have the draft, so as far as the engineers are concerned, they're ready for this phase. They're ready to have the city figure out how we're going to present this to the public, gather comments. I believe their contract includes them coming down for at least one open house.
Well, then what, since we have a draft, let's peruse it and, and then we could decide about advertising for the public to, to attend.
So hold an open house?
That's on our agenda here, right?
Yeah.
Right, okay. Light of sleep.
I think if they're going to be down here, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Well, if we can contact any stakeholders, I'm saying that that would be important to have them. I certainly have some questions for them. I'm not entirely, I, I'm, they're going to have to clear up, you know, on, um, some of the notions that, you know, in some ways, I think they went, maybe they didn't, that's why I want to ask them, beyond the scope of, of what they were asked. But, right now, I think, but the walkway run bay, I guess, you know, that there's, you know, some, I, I think it would be important to have them there so they could answer how indeed that they were going to build a sidewalk on, on the south shoulder of Bay Street on a slide zone. That goes over a cliff there. Except, with, with the exception of having to make that a one-way run there, Bay Street. And I guess I'm thinking along the lines in, in that is, that's just one of the things that I noticed that jumped out at me on the plan. If, if it's, you know, that old saying, there's, there's a true, the truth in it is if it's, if it's not broken, fix it. Okay? So that's kind of the way I was examining the whole, the whole plan, just the cursory, but maybe they can explain it to me, yeah.
Well, and then there's a number of methods of how to obtain public comment, and then how to get those comments to the engineers and work back and forth. So I think it's just a matter of how do we want to do that?
And it's concept right now, so, I mean, and even the engineering is going to be a concept. And, and up to the probably future councils or whatever, you know, or citizens of Deepwater Bay, how we might proceed and certain items on this list, what becomes the most important to the community, right?
And they have to be usable in the future.
Yeah.
Yes. So, actually, we should probably stick with the, I mean, that's good, those are all the points, Mr. Grant, thank you. But we're, we're talking about public outreach process, and the actual process to get to that point.
Right, excuse me, Council President, you're right, you're absolutely right.
Is to have some public meetings, or a public meeting at least. So since these documents are so large, we certainly can't print up, you know, fifty of them and have them in the office for one. Can these be, two, two forms of question here, can these be put on the webpage? Such that they can look at them like a PDF or something.
It's a pretty big document. It's a pretty big document.
It is, but they are electronic, so yes, yeah, we, we could do that.
Okay, then, I don't know, suggestion for everybody, everybody else, but make it known that these are on the webpage for people to review, and a public review, open house will be such and such a date, like two weeks later. Have a chance to look at this. What do you guys think?
Done for our committee?
So reach out to as many people and groups, inform all of our, like the planning commission, the parks commission, get any of our, our current people that are serving participate also because it touches all those groups.
Then it'd be easy to get the hard questions.
Right. Parks and plan, okay?
Yeah.
Also, of course, I think split up, you know, public notices in all of the usual spots.
All the usual spots.
Directing them to the, to the website for information and giving a date for the, for the public.
That sounds like a good plan, somebody like to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion. I move that we populate the webpage with the City of Deepwater Bay Harbor Master Plan final, draft final, and put out notices in usual places that these are available to the public on the webpage, and encourage public comment and an open house to be scheduled.
I'll sign it.
Need a second, when you're ready, Greg?
Give me just a second.
I see your busy, a little bit.
Sorry. Open house. And open house date to be future.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, there, I'm done, script.
Thank you. Call me.
Mattla?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Teen?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Weisel?
Yes.
Gaminia?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good plan. Want to an application for a liquor license for O'Connell Gallery and gift, gifts, yeah, gifts.
Mr. O'Connell is present in the audience if you have any questions of him on this application. It is a new outlet action for only off-prem sales.
Correct. I have one.
Sure.
Seasonal, seasonal variations was checked yes, later closing June through September, ten AM to eight AM. So that's ten in the morning till eight in the morning the next day, or?
No, ten in the morning to eight at night.
So that should have been a PM?
Right.
Okay, okay.
So I'll break the ice then?
Sure, go ahead.
So I'm assuming then that what you want to do is you want to sell bottled alcohol beverages for?
Gift baskets of Oregon product and so those would be wired.
Okay.
And anyhow, that's to, to promote the state of Oregon and to go off what I do with my sword.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Definitely a question.
If there's no more questions, I'd like to make a motion and approve the application.
Second. I'm sorry, should we worry about?
Yes.
Amending the motion to say only if this is changed to PM?
Yes.
Should. Yeah, it's got ten AM to eight AM.
Right.
And Pat, I assume that's easily done by you?
Yeah, 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 okay.
Second.
I'd like to use this forum to kind of tell you who I am and how I got here, because I haven't done this for twenty-three years. And not many of you know me, Jerome knows me the best. But I came out of Portland, Oregon, and I had a gift shop there, and I worked for fifteen years for Edison Brothers, all ships and railcars and barges. And I, I changed careers in nineteen eighty, decided I want to do an art gallery downtown Portland. And at that time, I was very escrow and, and was single. And got ready heady on the waterfront of Portland. And at that time, there was like three or four different associations. There was the Old Town Association, there was the Downtown Association, there was the Old Center Association. So I decided that I would get on board and start my own association, which was the Portland, Oregon Waterfront Association. So I went out to some dirty businesses, restaurateurs, retail, and I was the only retailer really in Portland's waterfront. Front avenue, at that time it was, it wasn't called Native Parkway. I'm, I'm, I'm bringing this to you ahead here in a minute, and then I'll get on your air. So what happened is, is I brought all these people together and talked to them about promoting the waterfront in Portland. And they're all excited, and we started the Waterfront Business Association. And so what happened then was I went on to, to guide that thing through promoting the whole waterfront of Portland, Oregon. And I operated my business there, O'Connell Gallery, for fifteen years, promoting the association and also my own profiteering and doing art gallery there. I started first Thursdays, single handling in Portland, Oregon in nineteen eighty-five. I was also involved in the, the, bringing Borishnikov to Portland, you know, for two years, in like nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-one. So I've been involved in promotion my whole life, you know, and that's what I did. I was a, I was a sales engineer for Gooderson Brothers and, and as I told you, I saw railroad freight cars, barges and ships. For, ships were only for a couple, a couple of years. So when I came here to Deepo Bay in nineteen ninety-three, I was married, had a child, had two children. And so I came to the city council because I knew people in Portland. And I said, you know what, I'd like to bring more business to, to Deepo Bay. I have a lot of contacts in Portland and I know the heads of RAS Transportation. So I went to the, went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting and I told them that RAS Transportation had talked to me. And they said, you know, one of the things that you've got in this town that nobody else has in any other community is you have a linear place for people to come to and as bus drivers, we love that. You only have one block and it goes for three blocks over the bridge and across to the south side. And I said, I never thought about that. And they said, you know, you would, you can make so much money here because we do like living worth in other towns where we have to gather people up and it would be a great place to do.